First, I want to thank you for invitation before I pray. The Jewish people, we came from observing a really sad day, Sunday, recognizing the horrors of oppression and antisemitism through the history of the Jewish day known as the Ninth of Av. So I want to thank you, City of Longwood, for standing for all humankind and allowing me to represent my faith community today. Following the pains of yesterday comes the hope found in today's gathering for a better tomorrow. This coming weekend will begin our day of love. It is a day when the Jewish people unite to rebuild. Today, we reunite in order to rebuild for a better tomorrow. And such is my prayer in the name of Yeshua. Remember, Lord, what has happened to us. We gather here today in your name. We ask for your forgiveness for all the wrong that we've done and from the wrong that our people have done. We try, but alone we can't. You, Lord, reign forever. Your throne endures from generation to generation. Why do you always forget us? Why do you forsake us so long? Restore us to yourself, Lord, that we may return, renew our days as of old, not like the days of our wickedness, but like the days of our faith. The faith of our fathers who always envisioned the promise of a life. As said in our declaration, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are our life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. May this promise, oh God, be evident in our lives today until we reach the greatest tomorrow. Hashem Yeshua, in the name of Yeshua, I pray. Amen.
Now we turn to agenda item number four A, community announcements. We turn this over to our retiring city clerk.
Four A, the Downtown Longwood Cruising Car Show will be held on Saturday, August ninth, from five PM until eight PM in the historic district of Longwood, and that's all the community announcements.
It's a short one this time. So now we go to proclamations, a presentation of beautification award to Evergreen Dentistry, Dr. Baig, five hundred East State Road, four thirty-four, Longwood. So it's a little certificate. It says, "Community Beautification Award." I really love what you did to the old, I call it the Dr. Bird Building down there at Grant and four thirty-four. But the City of Longwood is proud to present you with this Evergreen, at Evergreen Dentistry, the Beautification Award for our third quarter of two thousand twenty-five. Thank you for being here and bringing your extended family and your community helper too in dentistry. Please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. Let me introduce myself. My name is Dr. Parvise Baig. I'm a dentist by profession, and we have established our dental office in Longwood. This will be our second location. Just a little background about myself, I'm a U.S. Army veteran. I have, you know, provided service to our, you know, Army soldiers for about eight years and then moved on to private practice career for the past ten, ten years. On behalf of our team, I would like to sincerely thank you for honoring us with the Beautification Award. We are truly grateful for this recognition and for the warm welcome we have received in the community. The journey of establishing our presence in Longwood has been incredibly smooth, and your continued support has made it all the more effortless. We look forward to serving the community with the same pride and care that this award represents. Thank you so much.
Okay, next is agenda item five B, our nominations for the annual key to the city award. Are there nominations? I do have one.
I have one as well.
Okay, can I do mine first? I would like to nominate the guy that sits to my right, Tony Boni. He has been a homeowners association officer, and when he came in guns ablazing. He's set up so many operations with this, our city, within the historic society with his Be the Change, with his activities with seniors. I'm just proud of all he's accomplishing for the people who need help and the buildings that need help, and his family is wonderful. So Tony Boni.
Second.
And Mr. Morgan?
I was gonna nominate Milestone Gems. It's our jewelry store here locally in Longwood, owner Rachel Jones, for not just being a business owner in our community, but also contributing to three to four different nonprofits that benefit the City of Longwood year in and year out since they've come here.
I assume she would accept, so let's, all in favor of those two nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
I have another nomination.
Oh, a third one? Good, and we'll take the third.
I'd like to nominate our retiring city clerk for her over decade of contributions to our city.
That's very sensible. All right, do you accept?
Yes, I do.
Yes, it is.
Yes, she does.
Yes, all right, so all in favor of those three nominees?
I don't have one.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't think so. All right, we'll have you at the next meeting. Next time, board appointments, District Two, did you settle this out for your two people, land planning agency?
Yes. Madam clerk, was there another application that may have come in? And it came in sometime today. Yes, okay. So that means I have two people that have submitted for the position. I met with one, I have not met with this person. I'm comfortable with the first one, but I think I want to talk to this person as well, just so I'm fair to all concerned.
So August sixteenth.
I will have an answer at our next meeting. I apologize about the delay.
That's understandable, thank you. All right, and the next is six B, city commission nomination for a resident to the Board of Trustees for the City of Longwood Police Officers and Firefighters Pension Trust Fund. Do we have a nomination? We have somebody who wants.
I'd like to nominate Justin LaRoe back to the seat. He's the only one that applied, and he's currently serving, and he's interested in serving.
And he wants a job, so Justin's last name?
LaRoe? LaRoe?
LaRoe?
Yeah.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a nomination of Justin from Commissioner McMillan, and a second from Deputy Mayor Abby Schumaker, Justin LaRoe. LaRoe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank him for staying on and helping our city.
Thanks, Justin.
All right, I did not see any public participation papers. We have none, so now we will go to mayor and commissioners' reports, starting with District Two. Commissioner Boni.
Thank you, Mayor. All I can, the only word that comes to mind is wow. Longwood PD hits it out of the park again with their backpack back to school event. There's over six hundred backpacks handed out, and it was very organized, gave out bikes, gave out a lot of great stuff to these kids, and just, again, hats off to Longwood PD for putting this together every single year and making it bigger every single year. Earlier in the week, I was at the museum with the ribbon cutting for the new Seminole County map that was put on display. I had never been to this museum, and it was amazing with the stuff from the Senator tree in there, but the map, it's one of the oldest maps that we have, and it's one of the first maps that depicts Seminole County on the map, and it was, it was pretty cool to go witness. On a personal note, getting older, I was at my fortieth year high school reunion, and the best thing I can say about that is living in the past forty years ago with a bunch of friends completely disconnected me from today and tomorrow, and it was the most relaxed I have been in a long time. And just want to say thank you, city manager, I gave you the issue with Waterview Apartments. You jumped on it and just keep me up to speed on what happens with that. And that is the end of my report, Mayor.
And thank you. So now we move to District Three, Commissioner McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would commend the police department for the back to school event. Tony and I were there with Longwood Rotary. We sponsored, the club sponsored, and he actually ducked out to go to church. I stayed and roasted. But we, with a couple other Rotarians there, I got to meet the community, and the people came out, they gave the six hundred, six hundred backpacks, I believe, bicycle computer. It was well attended and good food, and, and I was, I wasn't sure how many people I would interact with when I went there, but, you know, it's, it's amazing what our community is. I would also like to commend Mr. Watts for coming to the Rotary meeting on the twenty-eighth. He was our speaker over at the Bradley McIntyre House, and he gave a very informative and engaging presentation to our members about what's going on in the city and, and its history and where we're going, and, and it was very well done, very well done. America, I was at the museum as well with Tony, and prior to that, the day before, there's the committee, America Two Fifty, to celebrate the two hundred fiftyth birthday of our country. The cities and county are coordinating, and I got to watch the meeting as it proceeded. I was, I was there representing Rotary, not in my official capacity as commissioner, but I gotta give a shout out to Leanne. She did a great job. She was actually complimented by Dr. Bauer because all the information was there and already had a logo and all this, and we were, we were ahead of the other cities, which made me proud. So glad to see that going well, and, and I'm excited about next year and whatever our county and our cities are gonna do to celebrate that. I'm not gonna be able to attend the League of Cities next weekend because I'll be out of town on a family trip. I do remain committed to participating in the legislative committee process next year going forward. I've been keeping track of my points, and I, and I managed to get gold again, so I've done that three times by doing all their, all their education programs and legislative activities. Going to the conference counts for a lot of points, but I'm confident I can make it up doing a couple other things. So I'm gonna shoot for four, four in a row for next year. But I wish luck to my colleagues. There's a lot going on in the municipal world right now with audits and DOGE and, and the, not just the legislature, but our new CFO, so there's gonna be a lot of conversations, and I hope we, hope you pick up some things and figure out what's, some tips about what we're planning on doing in response to that. And coming up, back to school, so I'm gonna wish all the parents with kids happy back to school preparation, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Could I ask you which committee you would like to continue to serve on, or is there a new one you'd like?
I like the, they changed the name of it. It used to be Land Use and Regulation Committee. They changed it to some, the name to something else, I can't remember what it is.
Land use or whatever.
But that's, that's the one I'm interested in, if they're still doing the same ones, but, okay.
I would also wear your name tag if you want to get credit. All right, now we move on to District Four, Commissioner Morgan.
I promised to keep this short last week, and I definitely lied and did not do just that, so my apologies to my fellow commissioners because it went long. I had a lot of blessed appointments to share with the residents of Longwood. You already heard a little bit about our, our Longwood back to school event, shared between our Longwood Police Department and our Longwood Police Explorers post two one, two one two. Each year, it continues to grow bigger, and huge shout out to everybody that was a part of that. I was able to take my own son there, I was supposed to take my niece and my nephew, but it ended up not working out. I wish they could have came and seen what a great event that was. But I personally, for that event, want to give a shout out to our Longwood citizens on patrol that busted their tails to secure that event between parking, crossing these major streets on Warren, for example, and then last but not least, working inside their own citizens on patrol trailer that was putting out hamburgers and hot dogs for folks wanting to have a bite to eat on top of all the great festivities we already have between the bounce houses and obstacle courses that our kids absolutely loved. It was another successful event, and it always is every single year. That same day, I was asked to go guest, be a guest speaker at Decision Tactical for a very important Veterans Day event they had there, even though it's not Veterans Day. They had different elected officials come in, like folks already know Rep. David Smith and others that have served in our military that are in elected office, and I was the only one that was asked to come speak at this event that had not served himself and felt very weird doing that, but honored to do it nonetheless because Decision Tactical is a great job in our community. And I continue to hope and pray our own Longwood Police Department will take advantage of the training that that facility does, because while I was there that day, while I was doing a tour of the actual course they have set up for police, was a very specific scenario that happened in Sanford most recently, where they had a veteran whose home they came up to, and there's a veteran sitting there in the front of his garage with a shotgun right to his chin, ready to commit suicide, ready to call it quits, and Sanford had to get through that, the Sanford Police Department. And then literally the next day, they were already out there training for that type of event again with the rest of their department, with it all there on screen, the same exact setup. They can put people in, they can put your wife on there, your kids in there, you name it, in the AI visual component of the training they give to these police officers. And again, I hope our own Longwood Police Department members can take part in this because it's a free service, and it's only gonna make our guys and gals all the more sharper. On the, today, I'm sure others will speak about it when, when the subject comes up, but had, I was in Atlanta for my other job with Orlando Recovery Center. I had opened up two new treatment centers that we had opened in Atlanta, and today I was able to meet with all three of our current candidates for interim city clerk. I was blown away by all three interviews, and I think we have an embarrassment of riches. to choose from when the time comes, because all three, absolutely amazing for the position. Going back a little bit to July 23rd, Commissioner Boni and herself, and we've all done this, taking part in our Wings Night over there at our Longwood VFW Hall, and I remind folks that if you want to support our local veterans, you can go to our Longwood VFW Hall and post right over there on Ronald Reagan on Wednesday nights. They have the best wings. I know you think I'm just saying that. I'm not just saying that. They are the best. We have restaurants in our city that pitch they have the best wings. No, they have the best wings, I promise you, and it will save you money along the way while supporting a very brave veterans here from our own Longwood community. Also, Ailstone Brewery is doing an amazing job here in our community of having the most of the summer while it lasts, as they put it, and they have kids 12 and under that are eating free with each meal per, meal purchase, I should say, once a week. And I continue to tell everybody, if you can, go check out Ailstone Brewery on your social media platforms so you can line it up for your families that night or day that they're having that. I want to give a huge shout-out to our own Longwood Sparkies Distribution. Sparkies Distribution is a BMX manufacturer, and during COVID, no manufacturing company in America, forget the state of Florida, in America, put out more bicycles to people during the COVID virus when everybody was trapped in their own homes than Sparkies. We should be very proud of that. And I put a tall task on them to see if they could make a BMX bike tall enough for Neanderthal Man over here to catch up with my son going around our block, because my wife's bike was not cutting in. I was flattening the tires because I'm fat and heavy. And nonetheless, they did. They really did a great job on it, and very, very honored that we have them in our own community for the bigger picture of how many bikes they're putting out there nationally, just not here in Florida. We're lucky to have them. They're right across the street, and I would argue 90% of residents don't even know they're there. Lastly, I should have said this last report. I want to give a huge shout-out to our Longwood Rotary Club. You guys brought back the mini makers market at Ryder Park, and I don't know how I missed it in my last report, because that was one of the coolest things I took part in, quite frankly, of the 55,000 things we all take part in each week, right? That was the coolest of them all. It really was. That was an event we were so proud to have for, for like three years straight, and then like a two-to-three-year window went by where they didn't come back. And I thought it was awesome that you guys brought them back to our community, and it was so cool. You had, you had help from so many different people within Rotary Club, between Matt McMillan and Tony Boni and Marissa O'Connor. And Marissa printed me off. She's so sweet. She printed me off like 50 flyers. She's like, you know where lemonade stands are? Go put that in their doorsteps or something and let those kids know that they're selling art and lemonade stands and all your Facebook posts you've posted over the last 10 years. Like, let them know that we're doing this. And one of them took part, and it was the last one. If you went through the whole event, it was the cute little girl that was selling her pet rocks that were painted, right? And good Lord, the whole event is awesome, and I beg you guys, please keep it coming, and I will do everything I can on my front to make sure people come to it, because what an encourager for our little kids that are so galaxies in front of where I was at the age. I wasn't even fat, I wasn't even thinking of things like this. I can sell my drawing for this. I can sell my pet rock that's painted for this, and they're already in front of it. And those are our future leaders of tomorrow without question. So love you guys and Rotary Club for bringing that back more than you can ever know. That's my report.
And thank you. All right. Next is District Five, which is me, the back-to-school event put on by the police yesterday. I don't even know how many people were here, but it was a crowd, and it was also 95, 96 degrees. I saw Ms. Elsie in there doing hot dogs and hamburgers, and they were free, and what a wonderful event it was, going to the outside organizations that had their tents up. Was nice to introduce and see what they do. I asked one, and I was embarrassed, and they said, oh, we're here in Longwood down in the Bennett. I didn't know them, so now I gotta go visit and be nice to them, I guess. So we'll see how that all goes. But what a great event. Backpacks given away, the haircuts were phenomenal, and to get a haircut on a elementary school, middle school kid at this time of the year is crazy. Try to find a booking. It's very hard. And to see how many they took in with all their tickets to do that, wow. Nice job. I got a weird call, fantastic call from, called AARP Magazine, and they wanted to talk about senior activity in Longwood and put it in their big magazine. I said, I know what's going on, but we have a guy on our commission that, that seems to be his energized focus, and Tony set up a meeting with him. He came to bingo, which I lost. I did. He interviewed me for a little while, and then he wanted to take a couple Longwood citizens to interview them about what's special about Longwood, and the things they said were wonderful. And I was 30 feet away, and I could beam that far, so to hear that. So it was good that AARP is noticing us. Longwood Elementary, thanks to Deputy Mayor Schumaker reminding me that I had $1,000 left in my donations. I just spent that. I went to Longwood Elementary and met with the PE coach. There's a lot of teachers putting out wish lists through Amazon Prime as to what they could use. His list totaled $1,000. I bought him everything he needed with that donation. So he was thrilled. He received it on Friday. The principal was more thrilled, so I don't know how you can keep her on the earth. She always seems to rise above with wonderful things to say. She floats. Also, we mentioned Deputy Mayor Schumaker did start the conversation about the Lewis House at our budget meeting. I did go to Lyman, met with Admin. I told Chris Kittner this. Lyman is thrilled to be able to use their students in the AC, electric, plumbing, and whatever needs to be done at that Lewis House. So they're going to coordinate something together, and we'll, we'll talk with them as well. So it's in motion, which is really nice to see. I did mention that there's a couple businesses that have left town. For instance, Wendy's has that big round sign, and the tile store has a big round sign. And our city says that if you leave the business, you've got to leave it covered with a white sign. They need to have that taken care of. And with Meet the Teacher going on Thursday and Friday, I want all families to be safe and enjoy the school, the upcoming school year. And that's the end of my report. We go now to District One. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I believe you meant to say our city clerk, city clerk reminded you about your $1,000.
No, that was you. That was you, no question. That's a good one, Abby.
I don't care it was spent. Good thing.
Okay. I don't recall that. Funny about you.
It was a budget workshop. It was good.
Oh, okay. I, I did speak about it, okay, but I wasn't directioning it at you, so, okay. I want to know, Commissioner Morgan, are you going to attend Calno, or do you need me to attend Wednesday?
No, I'll definitely be there.
Okay. Thank you. Needed to know that. And I want to compliment our, I call her our PR gal, Leanne, because I can't attend many of these events. What she does with that camera gives me an awesome overview and also lets me know what I missed. So good job on, I love seeing the haircuts and everything that back-to-school. On the commission, I learned more about what went on, so that's great, but what she does also helps me, so I appreciate that. And finally, and lastly, I just want to say all the absolute very best to our city clerk, Michelle. I'm glad you're coming back for the key to the city. I tried that on Clint, and he turned me down because I asked permission first, so, but I'm glad you're coming back, because his words to me were, that's a good way to get me back in there, so. But I'm glad you're coming back. You're going to be missed, and thank you ever so much for everything you've done for the city. End of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Agenda item 9A calls for additional items raised during the mayor's, the commissioner's report. Were there any things that we need to discuss? Seeing none, let's move on.
I did forget to say something.
Okay.
I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing on his report about the tiny home community that he told us about Friday.
Wonderful. Okay. So any additions or deletions to our agenda?
There are none.
Okay. And now the consent agenda. I would like to pull item 10C, but move forward with a motion on 10A and B unless they want to pull, anybody wants to pull those as well.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda 10A and B as written and presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. So thank you, Commissioner Boni, for the motion, and Commissioner Morgan for seconding it. Please call the roll.
Mayor Sackett?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schumaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boni?
Yes.
Commissioner McMillan?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
That being unanimous, that A and B are approved. My question on C, just to get something out there for transparency, the $20,000 is to actually bring into service one of our old engines. Is that correct? Because the one that was supposed to go over there doesn't fit in their building. It involves the old engine, which I'm sure needs $20,000 in repair. I don't have trouble with that, but can you explain what's going on with those trucks?
Yes, sir. Troy Feist, Fire Chief, and thanks for the opportunity. So we have two vehicles. One is a 2011, one's a 2012. They're E1 engines that were made to run out of Station 17. So those two vehicles, one of them needed a major repair, which is underway. The other one is kind of limping along due to its age. Our current model, we try to keep an, an engine or a rescue is about 10 years. That's the lifespan that they seem to last. We try to replace them as frontline units after five years. Otherwise, the repair costs like this start to add up. During COVID, we started seeing prolonged times for these builds. So even though we have a, a brand-new engine that was approved last budget year or early this budget year that we're purchasing, we're not going to see that for another year and a half, unfortunately. So we're, we're stuck trying to make some repairs. It's been an expensive year for repairs altogether. You know, I printed out a list, and, you know, we're currently in pending where we have quotes and, and stuff we needed, we need to repair about $11,000 short. Our budget does support this. We have $110,000 that we start the year with, and that includes not just these repairs, but tires and everything that comes with running these, these heavy, expensive apparatus. To answer your question about the station, our, our backup that we, that is Unit 722, which is a Pierce Fire Engine, it's eight years old currently, seven and a half, almost eight years old, and it does not fit well in the bays at Station 17. That was the old Engine 15 that Ladder 15 replaced. So while we do use it and run out of there, it's not an ideal situation. So we're trying to keep one of these E1s that actually fits in the bay available and repaired so we can use that as a frontline, so we can better secure the station.
Thank you.
Yep.
So any questions for him?
No, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we approve Agenda item 10C as presented.
Second.
We had a motion by me, a second by Commissioner Morgan, all those, and that'd be a real call as well. Thank you. Please call it.
Deputy Mayor Schumaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boni?
Yes.
Commissioner McMillan?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mayor Sackett?
Yes. And thank you, Chief. Now we go to public hearings. There are none. That becomes like a catchphrase for you this evening. Regular business, we do a discussion on the city clerk. So let's, that's Agenda item 12A. Mr. Attorney, proceed your process.
Sure. So what I would suggest after Maggie gives a brief presentation is that you have three members of the current city staff that have expressed a desire for this interim position that perhaps each commissioner would take a few minutes to give their thoughts on who would be best suited to fill that role. If not these three, then maybe another alternative before the commission then proceeds to making motions. Also, because we have current employees expressing desire for this interim position, I would just caution everyone to be aware that, of course, these are valuable employees, and we don't want to lose them, so we should be sensitive to what we say from the dais and kind of keep things positive. You all had an opportunity to interview these three people, and I don't think it's necessary, although you may disagree with me, I'm just the lawyer, to get into the nitty-gritty details of pros and cons of every person. Let's just kind of keep it simple and, you know, make a decision. Maggie had something that she wanted to say, but just the procedure I'm recommending, of course, it's up, it's your game. You could do what you want, but I would just encourage you all to go down the line, talk for a few minutes before jumping into a motion and a second. Now, this is not a situation where we're nominating someone to a board. You do need a motion, you need a second, and once there's that, then there's a debate that can occur after that. Each member can then debate. The first person to debate is the one who made the motion, and then after that, any other commissioner can still debate the motion. So are there any questions for me? That's just a recommendation on how you want to proceed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It was okay. So is your suggestion we discuss before anybody makes a motion?
Correct. Yes, I'm, I'm just, it's my suggestion, just, I think, in the interest of being fair to your peers and having a full discussion before jumping into something, just the sensitivities of that, and plus, you know, just take your time, but not, you know, I'm not saying too much time, but a couple minutes apiece. And the mayor is, of course, running the meeting so he can set the parameters on timeframes of each person's, each commissioner's discussion, and then, once a motion and second is had, during the debate, the mayor can set the parameters on debate limits. Any other questions?
No. Let's turn it to HR. Do you have anything else to add, please?
I'm sorry about that. HR Director Magdalena Redora. I was prepared to read the agenda item, but city attorney did a great job with his outline, so if you're, you all are okay with it, I can skip reading the agenda item? Or? Sure. Okay. So I, in addition to the agenda item that's, that was presented to you, I provided you some information to consider. Part of the information that I provided was, you had a copy of the job description. The job description from the last meeting outlined the minimum requirements of the position, which is bachelor's degree and five years of related experience. I also provided to you the, some information via email correspondence regarding the posting currently, the range of between 107 and 141, and letting you know that with a 5% on the minimum with, regardless of the candidates that we select, the base rate would be $54.32 hourly. However, when we add total compensation, which is an additional 30% to that base pay, you get to $70.62. So that includes FICA, Medicare, retirement, insurance, et cetera. So that would be a total of about, let me look at this for you, so that you guys have a clear picture of what you're looking at. Total compensation for an internal consideration would be $12,243.18 monthly for total compensation. And this is an adjustment to the email that I provided to you, because again, the original information was just basing the calculations off of base wages. When we're considering external options, if you're looking at Sumter Local Government Consulting, we're looking at 16,000 monthly costs, and that is not adding in the $2,500 per month for housing if needed, and also transportation. per month for housing if needed, and also transportation if this person is traveling at least 90 miles outside of city limits. And also Strategic Government Resources, this one ranges between, I received their proposal midday today, where initially, when I had a conversation with them, they said it was between $80 to $100, but when they sent their proposal, they did adjust the minimum to 90. So, we're looking at a monthly cost of between $15,588 to about $16,454. The Strategic Government Resources, SGR, there is an additional, what they consider a setup fee, where they run a comprehensive background, which is going to total about $900 once complete that they charge us for, and they also charge us for housing, and it also depends on how much, you know, the city decides to pay for housing and travel. And if we decide to select their employee as a permanent employee, then we do have to pay a $10,000 flat fee for hiring that person. The option for Florida Association of City Clerks, FAC, the Clerks in Transit Program, which is a professional network that offers resumes for experienced municipal clerks, these resumes are posted online for those who are seeking interim opportunities. So far, the only resume that's available to us is one resume, and I did reach out to that person, and unfortunately, that person is currently unavailable as they've accepted another interim opportunity elsewhere. So, with all of this information into consideration, please let me know if you have any questions for me.
Yes, Mr. Attorney.
And one more thing I forgot to address is that unlike the charter provision on the interim or acting city manager, there's not a specific time constraint on the appointment of interim city clerk. There's no position.
So, that 120 days doesn't apply?
Correct. It could be as short as you want, as long as you want.
Right.
And probably when your discussion comes up on if you're appointing someone in-house, if the motion, what the motion is recommending is you're part-directing me to work with the candidate selected to come up with an employment agreement. Give me some parameters on what you believe should be that interim time, whether it should be sort of an ongoing until you appoint the permanent position. It could be flexible like that as well. Thank you.
Okay. And there were more? Do you have something?
Just for Dan, but go ahead.
Refresh my memory. The original salary range was something to 175, correct?
The entire pay band from minimum to maximum is to 175, but we just.
What was the minimum on that one? The original one?
107.
107.
It was 107.
Correct.
And then what was Seminole County's range that you presented that day?
I don't have that information with me.
It was 80 to 120.
Right. The range that we did receive from the survey.
Except for two cities were slightly above that range, and they had long-term city managers in those roles. Why is, if it's 80 to 120, why are we 107 to 143? Why is that minimum over six figures for someone coming in? Because to my knowledge, none of our candidates have the five years of experience in a role for interim, but I don't think that's an interim consideration, that's more of a permanent consideration. Why is that still so high, the low range?
The reason is because we're one of the two government agencies around that you have city clerk reporting directly to the commission. All of, with the exception of City of Longwood and City of Sanford, every other agency reports directly to city manager. So, it's skewed because then those pay ranges are lower where you find the city clerk reporting to the city manager.
So, you're saying it's spiked because here in City of Longwood with folks, if you don't know this, our city clerks on an island over here, our city managers on an island over here, technically on the same level, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for HR? No. So, any questions for our attorney? None. So, I would like to propose that we do two to three minutes. Let's start out numerically, District 1 all the way to District 5, two minutes apiece. Let's not talk to the other commissioners, let's just hear what the other commissioners have to say. So, would you please start, Deputy Mayor, District 1?
Can I ask a question? And within this discussion, we're giving a recommendation of the three, correct?
Correct. That's my understanding.
Without making a motion yet, correct?
Without a motion, right. You can do a recommendation within your two, three minutes.
Okay. So, I can lead by, don't follow my example, probably. I'll go first.
Yes.
I think what you're asking, Mayor, is that I state who I've narrowed it down to and why.
The pluses of your interview.
Okay. Well, I've interviewed all three, and I've narrowed it down to two. That doesn't mean that the other person isn't qualified. It just means I feel like their demeanor and their structure and their happiness is in the job they're currently doing, and I don't see them being able to pull away from that job, and I don't see the city clerk as a position that would allow enough, would allow the time for that job to be done correctly. So, I am leaning between Richard Paris and Molly. And my reasons are Richard Paris has a strong background in knowing regulations and codes and banking, and he's done supervisory, and he happens to work at Public Works, but that's his choice right now, but he certainly has the qualifications. And also Public Works, although they might disagree with me, but I think any department is going to disagree with me when one of their staff is being pulled away for the interim position. I think they have the most coverage to cover him if we chose Richard Paris. Now, Molly, I feel like she is in, in our interview, she discussed where she's involved already with the clerk's office in a big way. She helps with different areas. So, I'm, those are the two I'm struggling with. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move to District 2.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say we've got some amazing employees here with our city, and all three are exceptional employees for the city, and I want to thank all three of them for their service to the city. I am, you know, after interviewing all three candidates, it's a tough decision between two of them, and, you know, I'm not going to say both, I'm just going to pick one of the two and move forward with it, and that choice is Molly. I just feel she's right next door to the clerk. She does a lot of work with the clerk right now, and I think it would be an easy transition for her.
All done?
All done.
Just her three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure of interviewing all three candidates, and they all did wonderfully. I approached the question a little bit differently. I did not approach the question as which of these three am I necessarily going to hire because I do keep the contractor on there. In my opinion, in our current environment and the current situation the city is in, it is in our interest to have an experienced clerk, even in the interim, because of, because there's, we've had some changes in staffing and management here at the city, and at the same time, at the state level, there's a lot of audits going on, and we have, we have a new budget person that started today, but at the same time, there are audits flying, and the clerk is the records person. And it's a volatile situation, and I would like to have not an insider, but an outsider that's coming in and is able to deal with those situations on a contract basis and give us the time to make sure we go through the permanent process. I think with the contractor, you can, as Dan said, you, we can extend it even further. If we feel like the resumes aren't strong enough, we could go a little further. The expense, I think, is worth it because it's one of the most critical positions in the city because nothing we do happens unless it's recorded, so it has to be of record, and the clerk is a very important position. So, I would prefer, and if we're all approaching it as which of the three, I can answer that question, but my first preliminary question is I would prefer to go with the contractor. Now, if I go for, based on what I just told you about what I, how I assess the situation, if I were to pick one of the three, they all did great on their interviews, and they all have great potential, I would go with Richard Paris because he has, because of his experience in the mortgage industry, and I am familiar with how that industry is and the pressures and the stresses of it, and somebody who can persevere in that and then also go into another career and then, you know, still be interested in expanding his, what he wants to do, I think that's a person that would do well in this environment. And so, that would be my pick if I had to pick between the three. But my first, I don't know how we're doing the questions, but my first, if there was preliminary question would be to go with the contractor. That's my opinion. Thank you.
So, Mr. Paris?
District 4?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I begin, I want to lean on our city manager here. Sir, between the three amazing candidates, I interviewed all three, just like my fellow commissioners did. I was gone into Atlanta from my other job that I do with Orlando Recovery Center, but came back, was able to bang out all three interviews, and was blown away by all three of them. In any direction we lean, we're in good hands in this spot. We really are. And I'm one, we're, me, Brian, and I think Abby, we're here, and we had to pick a city manager many, many years ago. I will argue we're ten times more blessed with the current spot we're in now with the embarrassment of riches with the three we have on the table here. Honest to God, I mean that. But, Mr. City Manager, I want to ask you, of the three spots that we have here with their current positions in our city and how important all three of them are, which in your opinion is not to demean the position, but one that we cannot, the one that we could, quote unquote, afford to have them continue to do while at the same time being our interim city manager?
Interim city clerk.
I'm sorry, city clerk. Trying to get you out of a job, brother. Sorry.
Would you like to respond?
Would you like me to respond?
Yes, please.
I think you should. All right. So, first of all, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, and certainly the whole commission has said this, we have amazing employees citywide who do an incredible job with very lean staff. The amount of work that goes in for every city employee is to be commended. So, it's a very difficult question. I would say that based on everything that I look at, day in and day out, and the evaluate those three candidates who all do an exceptional job, Leanne could step away from her job and function in the capacity that is being discussed here without a tremendous negative impact to city operations. And that's just based on my experience working with the director, the directors, you know, Maggie and Shad, and knowing what those three individuals do. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, me, continue. Thank you, sir. Leanne has already worked in the city clerk's department. She's the only one of the three that actually has real-life, real-time experience of what it takes to be a city clerk in our city. Of the three candidates, which, again, I continue to remind you, blew my mind in the interview process, all three. I'm not just saying that to make it sound good and sugarcoat it. They were amazing in the interview process, both Molly and Mr. Paris, and I'm keeping in a book with everybody. But she, actually, Leanne Cartagena is the one that actually has real experience in real time of what this position is calling for. And again, I remind everybody, it's a temporary position until we find who it is, and it could be whoever you pick is temporary, who knows? When we go out and we do the full interview process, which we're going to do, interview all of the best candidates possible as we continue to move through this. But what it sounds to me is Public Works is already shorthanded. They're not, they're not heavy-handed, they're shorthanded. It's the leanest department that we have. Mr. Paris, I was blessed enough to work with as one of the very specialists in my neighborhood, we only have 10 of them in our city, and I've watched him run backwards circles around those that came before him, and I sit as a friend of Bill Black that was here for years past, he's a good man, I love him to death, not demeaning his position in years past, but good Lord, Richard Paris has been the best of the very best I've ever seen in this position. He's helped us get up, linked up with, yeah, unfortunate ground tag, of getting our sprinkler system set up and electricity when previously our front entrance was destroyed because we had many residents that thought the city was still doing it because they didn't pay attention to, we no longer do that, right? And he was the first one to come to our neighborhood and really break it down and dummy things down so everybody could understand that we need to hire a third-party vendor, aka ground tag, which we're probably kicking ourselves for. But nonetheless, I watched him in real time of how important he is to our city, and I don't want to lose him in that spot because there's not another Richard Paris growing on a tree somewhere that's going to replace him. Secondly, Ms. Molly, good Lord, Ms. Molly's an MVP here in City Hall for folks keeping score at home, she's been outstanding. The only problem here is, is with our current HR Director, Ms. Maggie, having to not just be our HR Director, but currently, as we speak, having to also basically run our finance department. She's being stretched as thin as can thin possibly be stretched. And so, because of that, we have Ms. Molly stepping in there, okay? So, of all the three positions, and I've talked to them, I interviewed them, and I asked them all the same question, can you do your current position while being our interim city clerk? And only one could answer that question honestly, and that was Ms. Leanne Cartagena, and that's who I'm going to vote for.
Thank you. Okay. It was a sincere pleasure to interview all three. I learned about Mr. Richard, and I learned about Ms. Molly, and I learned a little more about Ms. Leanne. All of them presented themselves professionally, straightforward, and engaging. It was a nice way to spend a half hour, 45 minutes, but too short as, of course. And I come down to the same thing that Commissioner Morgan's saying. Who can step out of the position and lead us in this interim period? And while I had all three of them on my list, honestly, but my person who can do what I'm asking them to do as interim city clerk would be Leanne. Any more to add, Mr. Attorney?
No, I have nothing else to add, and at this point, you can entertain motions.
All right. I will entertain.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'm going to make a motion that we use an outside contractor.
I knew you'd do that, and.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second?
One, that, we're going to go to the external candidates.
External.
External contract employee, either Sumter or SGR.
Oh, do you have a specific consultant?
No, I'm just, for the purpose of discussion, what I'm trying to do here is divide the question and figure out which path we're going to go, external or internal, and I made a motion to go external.
Thank you. Is that your understanding under second, too?
Yes.
That's simple, is what it was. Okay, we have a motion. Do you have it recorded, motion by and seconded by?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It is debatable.
All right. Now, let's have a discussion.
Well, I made the motion, and I made the comment, and you kind of understand what I'm saying, and I, again, I agree with everything that has been said about how wonderful all these candidates are, and, but I don't see it as which, you know. And, uh, but I don't see it as which, with, you know, where we're going to be taking from, uh, which other department for coverage and everything, all the more reason that we have the coverage where they are, they're doing their jobs wonderfully, and we bring out this, bring somebody in, um, as a contractor to fill the void while we, uh, hire, make the permanent, uh, make the permanent, uh, so that's, that's it. I mean, I'm just going to repeat myself.
Any other discussion to that?
Well, I just want to say, I, I think that might be the best case scenario, going to cost more money, but we're not pulling a skeleton of a crew any, any further than they have to be pulled. Although, Commissioner Morgan, you feel Leanne can do her job and city manager feels Leanne can do that and the city clerk, I, I don't believe that's possible because there's so much involved in the city clerk's position that Leanne will suffer from the other job and plus the con, uh, contract that she's going to sign, um, pretty much dictates that she can't do two jobs. If you've read, because I had Maggie say that.
I have.
Okay, and it doesn't say that she has to put most of her time into the city clerk job.
It does. But it doesn't mean she can take videos and pictures at all of our events.
Let's not have a side discussion.
Right, but she doesn't just do that, she goes out on the road, she films the sidewalks being repaired, there's a lot Leanne does. Now, if Leanne's not doing anything but showing up at our events, then she's kind of not working, is she? Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. She fills her, she fills her days with 40 hours and I just don't see that that's going to work that well, but that's just my take on it, we're...
Would, would you like to comment, or your?
Just that, again, she extended that position. Let's keep it 100% real here. We had no Instagram, we had a Twitter page that was not posted on since 2014.
Correct.
She, hang on, let me finish, it's my turn.
Right.
Until she started with us, she's expanded every position we've asked of her, and by the way, she, along with Molly, are the MVPs of her last budget workshop, and they deserve their credit because they want a bigger task and I want to hire within, as far as, it's just a temporary position. I want to go within, within our own city employees on this one.
Okay.
And reward them.
I'm, I'm good to go to a vote.
All right. We've heard the discussion, please call the rule.
Commissioner Boney?
No.
Commissioner McMillan?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Respectfully, no.
Mayor Sackett?
No, no, no.
Deputy Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
There was three noes, no, there was one. All right, somebody speak for me, no.
Uh, that's three to two, sir.
Not it, not it. Uh, three noes and, uh, two ayes, so it does not pass. Another motion, please.
Hmm, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to nominate Leanne Cartagena for interim city clerk position.
Second.
All right, it's a motion, it's a second, let's open that up for discussion.
Mayor, just...
Yes.
Is, um, implied in your motion adopting the, um, requested motion inserting Leanne Cartagena's name, there's a whole motion recommended that involves, um, working with me and having, and forming the contract and negotiating it. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, again, I move to approve Leanne Cartagena for consideration for interim city clerk role, authorize the city attorney to work with selected candidate to draft interim city clerk employment agreement and set an agenda item for the consideration of approval of interim city clerk appointment and associate employment agreement for the next commission meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and a correct motion, uh, from Commissioner Morgan and a second by Commissioner Boney. Uh, call the rule, please, if there's no discussion. Is there a discussion? None.
Commissioner McMillan?
No.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mayor Sackett?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Shoemaker?
No.
Commissioner Boney?
Yes.
So, uh, she will be our interim, um, congratulations, Leanne, long process. I just liked the way the whole setup was this time, getting to know the people a little better, credentials a little better, um, all of them, where it was, it was a joy to speak to them. So now we move on. Mr. Attorney, is it move on to the next one or do we do something related to that?
No, we'll, we'll move on, uh, I'll, uh, work, um, to get a agenda item for your next meeting, that'll be the formal appointment with the, uh, Longwood Employment Agreement.
Okay, so now we move to Agenda Item 12B, please read by title.
Ordinance number 25 dash 2270, an ordinance of the city of Longwood Ford approving the citizen participation plan, providing for severity, conflict, codification, and an effective date.
And here he comes. Doesn't have any money involved in it, so we're okay here.
This one, well, sort of. Hello, Shad Smith, Public Works Director. Um, this item here is for the, um, creating a public assistance, public participation plan for, um, the city so we can get, um, CDBG grant funding, um, or meet the requirements of it. So you, if you read it, there's 24 CFR and 91105 and a number of other, um, requirements. But basically, we just have to have a formal public participation plan. I believe the city does a really good job informing the public and letting people talk to us and taking that input, but this formalizes a lot of that. So that's what it's for. Currently, we have, um, starting tomorrow, we have a CDB, CDBG project starting on Orange Avenue, and also, um, we're getting CDBG funding to do the drainage improvements at Fire Station 15. So those are two of the existing projects that are ongoing. So if they came and audited and they asked and we show that we have a per, a, a plan in place, so, and then, of course, the hearing is at the next meeting, so that's kind of it for this item.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Welcome to answer.
Any questions? Motion, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to read by title only, said August 18, 2025 is the public hearing date, and approve the first reading of ordinance number 25 dash 2270, approving the citizen participation plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Morgan and seconded by Commissioner McMillan. Uh, any discussion? Or none? Please call the rule.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mayor Sackett?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boney?
Yes.
Commissioner McMillan?
Yes.
That being unanimous, we now move on to, uh, what number is this one?
12C.
This is, uh, 12C. Please read by title only. Mr. Attorney?
Read by title only, adopt resolution number 25 dash 1699, resolution 25 dash 1699, resolution of city of Longwood Ford, authorizing the city to enter into a grant agreement and amendments thereto with the U.S. Department of Agricultural Natural Resources Conservation Service, authorizing city manager to execute the agreement and related documents and providing for an effective date.
Hello again, Shad Smith, Public Works Director. I, um, this is an additional grant funding that we were hoping would come. Basically, it doubled what our grant was, um, so we're up at the, what they usually do is a maximum, which is a 75% match. So we're paying 25, they're paying 75, which is really good.
That's a win.
Yeah, so, and that project is ongoing, so it's an active project. This really just helps us fund that project.
Any questions for Mr. Smith?
No.
Nope.
No, motion, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve resolution 25 dash 1699 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Deputy Mayor has made the motion and, uh, our District Two Commissioner has seconded it. Any discussion? I see none, so please call the rule.
Mayor Sackett?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boney?
Yes.
Commissioner McMillan?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
That being unanimous, we move on to 12D. Mr. Attorney, you're busy tonight.
Yes, had adopted resolution number 25 dash 1700, amending the fiscal year 2024/2025 budget. Resolution number 25 dash seven, one, seven, zero, zero, a resolution of the city of Longwood Ford, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025 relating to the budget facilities fund appropriations, providing for severity, and providing for an effective date.
Bigger breath.
All right. Um, hello again, Shad Smith, Public Works Director. Um, this is the budget amendment for the, um, for the landscaping project on 434 from, um, Range Line Road up to Roberts. It's the area of the median, so this will be totally redoning all that median through there, um, and that's what the additional money is for. We originally anticipated about 450, we put that in, um, just to have something there, and it came in lower, or higher, sorry, we didn't have enough. Um, one of the good things about this is this does not include the, um, maintenance of it, so this is a contract where we put the maintenance on the contractor that wins this. So the first year's maintenance, after they complete the construction, was covered already in this price, and then there's two additional years of construction, of maintenance and warranty, and that'll be the following two years. So, won't be even in this year's budget, it'll be in the next year's budget by the time this starts, so that is the plan.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The state, the Robert, two I four, is F-top property.
Well, there's not much to...
They don't clean it up much, it looks pretty bad now.
Well, the...
And the city is spelled L-O-N-G-W-D, the lights are out.
Okay, that's good to know. Well, I'll, I'll make note, I'll call somebody on that.
All right.
Um, the, uh, the section in the median, there's only a small piece of landscaping, the little piece that's in the median is DOT, it's actually the I-4 people. The pond on the left, as you head out of town going west, that is the city's pond, um, and that falls to ground tech, you know, the contractor, which we're trying to work on. Um, the pond on the other side, or the area on the other side, if there is any, is, um, the responsibility of the, um, concessionary I-4 ultimate folks.
That, that explains a lot, but like, can I have a motion on 12D, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to read by title only, and adopt resolution number 25 dash 1700, which amends fiscal year 2024 slash 2025 budget and authorizes funding for the state road 434 corridor landscaping slash hardscaping improvement project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, uh, the double mats, so Commissioner Morgan made the motion, Commissioner McMillan seconded it, and so, I got that right, I think. 12D. Call the rule.
Deputy Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Boney?
Yes.
Commissioner McMillan?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mayor Sackett?
Yes. That being unanimous, so now let's move on to, are we still there? 12E.
12E is just the award of that contract, what we just discussed, to Earthscapes Unlimited, so...
Any discussion questions?
No, just fingers crossed, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, we move Agenda Item 12E.
Well, somebody on this end seconded it, so we don't get tongue-tied.
Second?
Second, there we go. Uh, 12D, 12E, uh, motion by Commissioner McMillan, seconded by Commissioner Boney. Please call the rule.
Commissioner Boney?
Yes.
Commissioner McMillan?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mayor Sackett?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
That being unanimous as well. Boy, those went quick, so now it's your turn, Mr. Manager.
All right, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor asked for me to, uh, touch a little bit on, um, the tiny home project. Uh, our community development team was, uh, approached by a developer that wants to transform the former Whispering Oaks, the mobile home community that was there that's, uh, now been, uh, vacated, and, uh, to a tiny home community. Now, that is allowable under the current zoning of that area. So we've also told the developer about Cornerstone and how their desire to come in the city and make their tiny home project there, so more to come on that, but, um, uh, that's very exciting for that site.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, the tiny homes that was implemented, that I spearheaded that and it passed, um, way back in 2017, 2018, um, they had to be not on wheels. Is this going to be on wheels because it was a mobile home park before, or is it going to be the same as on the ground?
Um, I'll have to get clarification on that.
Okay, I'm just curious.
It'll be pads and foundation and a home to the ground, but is this grant and, uh, right there on Grant Street by the Waterview Apartments, that land right there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor, I'll...
I, I, I got it.
I'll get absolute clarification on that, just to make sure.
I'm just curious, it's not important to me, but it might be.
I'm pretty confident in what Commissioner Boney is saying, but I just want to make sure.
Tiny homes are mobile.
Correct, yes, sir.
Yes.
And to correct, you say it one time, Mr.?
Tiny homes are not mobile.
I put the word N-O-T, yeah. Just make sure that everyone heard that part. Thank you, Tony.
I, I think it's exciting because I think we should have as many tiny homes as possible in this city. It would make us unique.
It would.
How, how did the developer get the gentleman to sell the land?
That was 15 years in process.
I'm telling you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question in this city?
Yes, sir.
Manager, like Commissioner Shoemaker was talking about, our commission was very passionate about this back in 2017, wasn't just one. Um, with that said, but it never came to fruition with the properties we put out there and appointed that we could have these tiny homes built on. Uh, someone gave people's hopes up, if this is something that's going to fall through again, with, with respect to Cornerstone, because it was the same company back then as well, is this something that can actually get done?
Well, certainly it can because it's allowable on that site. So, you know, as long as we, as long as the developer moves forward and moves through the site plan and stuff like that, I mean, I don't see a reason why it would stop because it is allowable there.
Yeah, that sounds like the piece that was missing. You had the, the code set up to allow it, you had a, a supplier to build it, but you just add, nobody owned it.
Exactly.
And just to correct my statement, um, when I was elected, I went to JD and I met with Cornerstone, I did all that before I brought it to the commission. I had a unanimous, um, agreement with it, we...
It was a longer resident that pushed that and brought that to our attention, to be correct.
No, it was me.
To a friend.
Let's stop the dialogue and let's just move it forward, continuing to report.
All right, uh, thank you for that. Um, big shout out to Public Works, uh, they're working on, uh, our procurement team over in finance to, uh, uh, obtain an emergency contract for citywide right-of-way mowing to ensure that the city remains as beautiful as always has been. Um, at the same time, they're also procuring a long-term contract with a new, uh, um, mowing company. And again, shout out to, uh, Public Works and Leisure Services because I was just informed today, just before the meeting, that Candyland Park received all of its new upgraded, uh, sidewalks.
Nice.
So, uh, if you have a chance to go out there and check out, uh...
The new ones are really good looking.
Yeah, and, uh, I, I hear they're very nice, so I'll have to go out there and check them out, so, thank you, uh, Shad and his team for making that happen, and Chris Capizzi at Leisure Services. Uh, I was requested to, uh, to report on the available funds in our Pennies for Parks. This is the Roundup Fund that we have. Uh, we have about $3,400, give or take, in that fund that's available. And then, the last thing on my report is, uh, reminder, uh, there's an FDOT, um, open house tomorrow at our community building right here, from 5:30 to 7:00. I know that, uh, you were all informed about this, but it's very important, this will, This will provide information on various projects, including the big intersection of 427, 434, the upgrades there, along with many other intersections between Range Line all the way through 1792. That's all my report. Thanks.
I have a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
You gave an update in your email on Friday about Fire Station 15 and FDEP. Is that the holdup, or is it FEMA? I can't remember. Which one is it?
It's the FDEM holdup. It's all of the federal funds, so...
It's the federal fund, so where does the contact need to be made? On the federal side or the state side?
Federal side. But we're working through that, and we believe we're going to have, believe we're going to have an answer here very soon. It's the phase two completion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. City Attorney?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Michelle for all of her years of service here at the city of Longwood. It's always been a pleasure working with you, very competent in your job, and appreciate everything you've done. And I certainly feel old with all these young people retiring. You know, young city manager, young city clerk.
Don't get any ideas, Dan.
I mean, what is going on?
Yeah, you're not retiring, buddy.
No way.
Johnny?
I'm not built for that. But anyway, thank you so much. Appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, Michelle.
Wish you well for everything you're doing in the future.
Thank you.
Who has the card? You have it?
All right, well, it's our city manager's report?
No, we're on to...
No, we're on to the city man, oh, clerk. I mean, I'm looking right at her, calling her. Oh, my gosh, you tried getting her...
We're gabbling out. You all have a report?
I do have a few things.
Wow, okay.
They confuse me. They tell me one thing at the beginning and then switch it up. Go ahead.
So, thank you. Just as a reminder, the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference will be held next week, August 14 through the 16th, at the Signia by Hilton Orlando Bonnet Creek. And Commissioner Morgan is the voting delegate for Longwood. I did receive a request from Karen Bush. She's with Our Legacy to attend the August 16th commission meeting. She wants to come to thank the city for their support when they host their annual great to donate the 5K, 8K run for organ donation that they hold at Lyman High School. If there are no objections, I'll go ahead and add her to the August 16th.
Please do.
Perfect. And then I would like to thank the commissioners for the opportunity and trust that they placed in me as the City Clerk. It was my sincere honor to serve the city of Longwood. I've enjoyed my time working with a dedicated team and contributing to the well-being of our community. And I wish the city continued success, and I just wanted to thank you all. And that's the end of my report.
I signed your employment first-day papers and signed the retirement, so we've had a long ride together. And with that, we are adjourned.
And thank you.